Okay. First thing, as to approve the agenda, is there any additions? I noticed that we had a new sheet. Looks like we added one more.
You have a change to the first two resolutions by the addition of a name. Same name on both resolutions?
Jerry Biermeyer. Or Jeremy Biermeyer. Okay. So that would be replacing the list of both primary and general election judges?
Correct. Would be changed by adding that name to both resolutions.
Okay. Any else?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, I got a motion by Dave Brusick, second by Sean Ryan to approve the agenda. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes for zero. First thing. Resolution to... Wait.
All right, yes, we have to do every couple of years. We do need to appoint election judges and set their pay, which is done by resolution per statute. And this was statute 204B, 21 subdivision 2. We actually only have to make our appointments for the primary election judges tonight, but we typically do for the primary and general at the same meetings. We use the same list of judges for both. What we will do is then pull from the list of the 32 names that are noted here with the addition of Jeremy Biermeyer. We will basically pull the number off that we need for the primary, which will not be all 32. And then for the general, we would be utilizing everybody. But everybody still has to go through the training, and that is required. Two hours minimum for other election judges. And the training will be in the month of July, both Scott County and La Sura County. We are proposing to raise the pay to $10 an hour. If you recall, it had been $9.15 an hour back in 2016, which was minimum wage. Minimum wage has gone up to $9.65 an hour. And rather than kind of play that game, we just moved it up to $10 an hour for the judges. And we have heard from the school district, they actually had been paying considerably more for their judges, who are now, some of those people are on our list because they're not doing a separate election on their own cycle. So we didn't hear any complaints. We just thought we would make it an even 10, just only 35 cents an hour worth of minimum wage. But that would be our recommendation for the judges for their pay. They do get paid to attend the training, so I did want to point that out as well. The school district was not paying for their time to attend training. So it kind of offset to a degree. So that is the list of the 32 judges. We have a few new names on there, but I think we've got a good group. And I do want to note that head judges would be Amber Thielwarr, who has been an election judge for a number of years with us now. And then the other one would be Jennifer Seiler, who had been an election judge for a number of years. So I think they'll both do a great job if we have one election judge each, count them increasing. Other than that, just for general information for the public watching at home, primary election on August 14th, Tuesday night, and then general election on Tuesday, November 6th. And for those wishing to file for the seat of mayor, the two regular council seats, and then the special election, which will actually be a separate ballot for the balance of a four-year term with just over two years remaining. Those filings can be made starting on Tuesday, July 31st, 8:00 a.m. at City Hall. And those are due by 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, August 14th. So not a very big time period for the filing, but that is when that would open, July 31st to August 14th.
Okay. Any questions for Ken? If not, I guess I'll make a motion. We'll do a resolution first for the primary election.
I'll second.
Second by Maggie Bass. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes for zero. And then I guess I'll make a motion to approve the election judges for the general election. One on the page.
Second.
And second by Sean Ryan. Any other comments? All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposition? Okay. Thank you very much, Ken. Next, I think you're taking Habitat.
I will. So this would be request number seven for Habitat Homes in New Prague, where they have requested with their building permit application to have the building permit, plan or do park dedication, and then the water and sewer connection fees reduced by 50%. So we have, through the council's approval, waived 50% of those fees at all the other six permits in the past. And this would be their seventh home they're requesting that on. And this would be constructed on Wentz Avenue North, 9091. So which is actually directly to the home that was constructed back there in 2016. So the letter is attached on the back of the memo for your review for their waiver. And there have been good projects in town, and staff would recommend approval to waive those fees once again, as we have done historically for them.
Okay. Any questions? Comments, your name? Okay, I guess I'll look for a motion. So move.
Second.
I got a motion by Dave Brusick, second by Maggie Bass to reduce the permitting fees by 50% for the Habitat and that area home. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes for zero. Moving right along. Ken, just keep your on a roll.
I hope you're going, we're going here. All right. Another update that we provide every year is the population estimate. So just for everybody's background information, these estimates are always over a year behind that we receive. So this one is for April 1, 2017, as current as we can get. Now, obviously, has a little bit of the bump in new home construction that we've had, and town home construction. But even in this equation, as of April 1, 2017, so 2017, they had a number of permits. But they still have, in this very convoluted equation, certain occupancy rates based on the times since the permit was issued. So we're going to see, I think, even a bigger ramp up in our estimate we'll have about a year from now for the April 1, 2018. So keeping that in mind, we basically, in this estimate, over a one-year time period, had a jump of 140 residents and then 36 households. So again, we had more than 36 new home permits issued, but they don't count that household until a certain amount of time has passed where they figured that would then be occupied, and then they would account residents to it. And I think the formula is about a page long, it's a spreadsheet. So if you ever want to look at it, we can get into that, but it's not a whole lot of fun. And actually, last year was the first year I did not have to argue with the demographer and their estimates. But we had a number of years, for about 10 years, I think, in a row, where they were estimating New Prague's population estimates too low, that they were kind of lumping us into some of the larger cities where they had seen smaller family dynamics happening. And we're not seeing that in New Prague. We have new homes constructed, and they usually fill with children, and the school district has seen that. So I used to have to provide data from the district to the demographer on our household size. But they finally bought into it, I think, and I haven't argued that for two years. And I think the numbers are good for our estimate. I'm still thinking that our 2020 census number will probably shore us up even higher, but we'll see how that plays out. So in relation to these numbers, and if you have any questions, maybe I can stop. And if you have any more questions about this actual estimate for 2017 here.
Anyone have any questions for Ken?
Nope.
The other thing that we have started working on, what is called the 2020 Census Luca, which is a local update of census addresses. And I did actually complete that earlier this spring. And in a nutshell, what that entailed was, census provides a database of all of our addresses on an air photo of the city, and we have to make sure there's actually a house on there. And then any new construction homes that have been constructed since that was done last in 2010, I had to go through and basically do a little bit of ground truthing, but most of it was done by air photo review and our permit data to add new homes onto that database. So I did complete that. It was, I forget the exact number of homes that were added to that list, but I think I've got an accurate count. There still is a time period, obviously, we will have new homes constructed from now until, since April 2020. And we'll continue to add to that list. But it went pretty well. The census provided an actual mapping program that matches in with the data we've been collecting on new homes in our lot inventory and all that. So it actually went fairly quickly. And I think we've got a good, accurate address list out to them. Interesting thing about that is we are not able to, through Title 13 of federal law, keep that list. So we actually have to hand it over to the census, and we don't get to use it for any local use. It's confidential data. So kind of odd, but it's just addresses of homes. But we already have that on our own record, but we cannot use their list we provide to them. So I think we're in good standing. We'll continue to track new homes till 2020. But one thing to note as well, I've gone to a few different trainings, and this will be the first census where you will be able to fill out your census information online. You won't have to fill out a paper form. So that's a new thing. I don't know how they're going to do security. I don't think they have that figured out yet at this point. And so you will be able to figure it out, fill it out online. And they will once again be sending out people to go door to door if they realize you haven't filled out the survey yet, but will not be as many people as they historically had. So one thing we'll be bringing up, probably in about a year, is a local count committee. And mayor, you'll probably be notified of, see, if you want to head that up, you'll be getting a notification on that. And basically, it'd probably be a thing where maybe the council may need you, you know, make a statement of how important it is to make sure you fill that out, because it means a lot for local funding for New Prague and other programs that rely on that information. About a year from now is when they said they'll be really rolling it out.
Okay.
Ken, last night we were coming through Lawnsdale. I remember Lawnsdale from when I was a kid growing up, and that community has just mushroomed. Do you have any idea what the population is currently?
I do not know, to be honest with you. I do know, because they actually share permit data with us every year, that we have had more new homes constructed than them in the past.
Heck, we have.
So I think we're all pacing them into this point. But yeah, they're certainly growing as well, as a whole.
Any other questions or comments for Ken on this? Well, thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
I'll be looking forward to that personalized contact for...
They said they'd be contacting the mayors, that's why I bring them.
Okay, next. Glenn?
Yes? In front of you, we have our one and only change to the contract, change order number one at the baseball field. What it included was some additional concrete next to the swimming pool. There's a little map, and also a picture from a drone that flew over and took some pictures of the field. But when it was realized that they wanted a certain sized check deck and needed to move it a little bit more to the east because of sight lines, because of visitor dugout, we decided to add more concrete there, which is going to make that whole area a lot nicer. So there is a change order in front of you for $4,111 for heating construction. It is, as I said, change order number one. So just getting your okay, and then signature by the mayor and city of Glen's ability.
Is it that area that's dirt right now, or is it already in place?
No, it's already in place.
So it's the spot just east of?
That's correct.
Okay.
We were at first just planning on doing a little bit of concrete and not going all the way to the fence, but it just made so much more sense just to finish that off.
Okay. So that spot in the behind the check deck, that is going to remain whatever it grows?
We hopefully will get to that, whether it's going to be this year or do it with our own staff because of the cost, they wanted to do that. I looked at doing that all this time, but it was quite a bit of money. So we decided to do ourselves. Whether we can get to it before the state tournament or at some point in the future, but we'll be able to do it a lot cheaper than that.
But that is going to be also concrete there, that's?
That would be my plan someday.
Okay. Okay. Any questions?
Just a comment, this whole ballpark looks wonderful.
Has it? Yeah, I was going to comment. If anybody wants to get in there sometime during the day, give me a holler, or even, you know, in the evening sometime, I can open it up for you and you can walk around. Yeah, I totally agree.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Yeah, I think it's going to be great. Lot of volunteer help. I mean, those guys that built the check deck, just did a great job.
Okay.
It's not finished too, but there is seating that you can go in there.
Yep.
Oh, and the check deck?
As you look at that.
Yes, Glenn was mentioning a little bit of chairs or something.
There's two sets and moving on seats yet.
So when it's all said and done with the rented bleachers and that stuff, what is roughly the capacity? Oh, you knew I was going to ask something that you didn't.
I should have known that, but I didn't. Honestly, I don't know. I got to figure that out or find that out. I can shoot everybody an email, let you know what that's going to be.
Or the next meeting or anything. It's not, I just thought about it enough.
I apologize, I don't know.
Because I don't know how big those temporary bleachers?
The temporary ones, I believe, hold like 100 people. I'll verify that also. And I want to say that the bleachers we got there now hold like 250 or something like that. If I'm right with those numbers, we should be close to 250 or so.
Sounds good. Any other questions for Glenn? Okay, I look for a motion to approve the change order. So move. Second. I got a motion by Dave Brusick, second by Sean Ryan. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes for zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that you had questions on, or you saw any changes that are needed or anything?
None on the agenda itself, but again, some of the items.
Right. Yep. Anything that you need clarification or questions on anything in the consent agenda?
Do we have to do a special thing on the public hearing? That's in here. Is that just?
All you do is call in for the hearing tonight.
Yeah, we'll call in for the hearing.
Yep.
Do we have to recommend a vote on that individually?
Vote, vote, make it part of the consent, that's why we're here.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay. No one has anything?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Second by Maggie Bass. Any other, if there's no other comments or questions, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes for zero. We're at miscellaneous already. Patrick, you can start us off.
Well, this coming Thursday is the summer solstice, so obvious.
Okay. All right, thank you. Sir, do you want to make a comment or anything?
Actually, I've got a question on how things happen in New Prague.
Sure. If you could state your name and your address.
My name is Joel Renske, 501 Second Avenue Northwest, their town. And I have an issue with people running in my family, person's driving the payload. Person whoever hit my fences, hit multiple times, and the city refuses to fix it. They want to put a new meter thing in my house to read the water, whatever that is. I won't let them do it till my fence is fixed. I have a couple of photographs, if you'd like to see them, of my said fence.
Sure.
Where's the fence located, Ken, sir?
What's that?
Where's the fence located, your address, I didn't get it?
501 Second Avenue Northwest. It's on Fourth Street side, it's in my yard, I put it in. Email them all, K, you see? I was going down the line, because this is the Fourth Street. It's just like an alleyway type deal. We start going down it. They were supposed to fix it when they redid this road. But I told them I wasn't going to sign it until my fence got fixed. Because my fence has been hitting out for 14 years. It's like the first week or first snowfall, actually, I grabbed it up. It's been tore. If you look down, you can see where my T is busted there. That's the second one I leave. Now, when you look down here, I can't even get to where my pin was. Looking down there, you can see how it's just been mangled. That's Schedule 40 pipe, the belt and ice pipe. The top pipe is two inches tall, the pole is an inch and a half. But I had them spaced every four feet, cement underneath them. It's that big that someone would run into it, not knowing the payload or what you did. Know what I mean? And my question I have to you guys too, because I have one to whoever's running down there, whether it was Bonesak or this last guy, about... Wherever I had another one. They put that right on my corner so I can't fence my neighbor out to southeast of me. He keeps running in my yard, old man. That's why I put the fence up in there, so he would keep his lawnmower in his side of the yard. But he likes to walk all the way through that stuff to get to my yard and kick the walnuts off of my property. Or into his lawn, his lawn, not true, but planted right on the lawn, right by the hill. And if you look... This is really good. My neighbor's got shone us. That's this little stupid shack there. You're supposed to be 30 feet away from the road with any structure. And it's not 30 feet. That's why they're hitting my fence, because they're going around a stupid little building. They had their property hogged. Doesn't matter.
The image of the fence is mostly in this area.
Yes, well, they had fixed the first part of it after they redid the road. And then COVID got here, go, not sign up until you fix those fences. Because the city's the one that hit it. I watched them hit a payload. But I can't get any justification out of the people that are in charge there. Because one, they keep threatening to shut the water off. I'm like, dude, I'm paying the bill. I don't know what judge is going to let you shut things off when you're still paying the bill. I just want you to fix the fence. Now I want my big neighbor out of it, I want my whole property back. Because I've had the pins put in the first time before I bought it, and since then, they've been pulled. Everyone's been pulled, I've had them replaced twice already.
Pins, pins, a lot.
Lot lines, corner lines.
I've had the apron cut off of my property once. And had to pay to have it put in the correct spot the next time when they redid the road. And when you look at where they got all of the power...
Was there a pole there at one time?
There was a pole, I don't think it was there. But right on the other side of that, there is supposed to be a right of way for like a, what do you call that? An alleyway. But they put all of that stuff in my yard and ran all the wires in my property and set it down the alleyway, which is the right of way. Know what I'm saying? I just want, I want to keep my neighbor out of my yard, and I want my fence fixed.
Glenn, was that, have you contacted?
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. So...
I just want to hear your side of the version, or your version of the...
Well, what I can tell you about this is when that fence was installed, and it's on the line, it can be there. But there was a concern in a letter written from Jerry Bonesak back in the day, before I was in charge besides being in public work, that be aware that the fence is so close that the snow's probably going to damage that fence.
It wasn't the snow that damaged the fence, it was the payload that hit it.
I don't know that the payloaders ever hit it.
Yes, it has.
Okay.
I've witnessed it.
But I'm aware of it, payloaders never hit it.
They never hit stuff?
Well, not that fence.
Yeah, they've hit that fence.
So if the damage is, what, in my opinion, from the snow through all the years, 14 years, you said?
That's how long the fence has been here.
Yeah. If the damage is from the snow, it's really no different than a mailbox. If the snow does damage to something because the snow's so heavy, which in that area, you get 14 inches of snow out in one event, and because of whatever's on the north side or the south side...
I'm not... You can see where the fence is stretched. You might make a claim for that, but the other side isn't stretched. My top rail has been hit with the payloader and it's broken a T's off. That isn't a 14-inch heavy snow thing. This stuff is made to handle that. I threaded those on. It's not like they were just placed there. They were threaded in.
That's where we'll differ in what we think happened.
And it's not a pickup truck that hit it, because it's up three feet. It was the payloader with the wing. The wing hit it, because he was going around that stupid building that's inside of that 30-foot, that nobody seems to want to move, which should be moved, since it's a movable shed, and it's inside of the 30-foot setback.
The shed, I can't answer to, I don't know anything about it.
It's a tape measure duty. Everybody drives by right by their school there.
Ken, would you, is that, maybe you can check?
There's a letter in the file from Jerry Bonesak about that shed. And at that time, he wrote in the letter that it was a non-conforming shed, meaning it was in place before the 30-foot setback went into effect.
Doesn't matter, it's a movable building. Doesn't have footings on it, you can move it. Mine, that I built, meets all the setbacks, doesn't matter. And right after I built mine, they changed all the rules. You couldn't build one that big anymore. I'm just saying.
Yep, and I'm just going by what was in the file on that.
Well, the file's a bunch of BS. It's a movable building, he can move it. He can park his car in.
And my opinion of it, and I agree with former administrator Bonesak, that that shed was there before that ordinance went into effect, then we can't force him to move it.
Yes, you can.
And I haven't had any specific contact on our attorney on that matter, but that's how I would interpret that as well.
You can go ahead and interpret however you want.
Yep.
But you will fix the damage you've done to my fence. That you will do, or I will take everyone of you to court, if it goes down that road.
Okay?
That's all I got to say.
Yeah, okay.
Make them do the job. Thank you, Mike.
Yep, thank you for your comments. Jim, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Okay, Glenn?
I've got nothing.
Ken?
Nothing more.
Okay. Michael?
I will be out Wednesday through Friday at the Lee's Police Conference in St. Cloud. I don't know if the council signed up. I'll hopefully be till late morning on Wednesday and back Friday afternoon, I guess.
Okay. Contact will be Ken or Patty?
I'll try and look at that, we'll set that tomorrow.
Or just give it Barb, she'll take her. Okay. Barb, you have anything?
No.
Sean?
Ken, is it, would it be wise to get a letter from the attorney stating that we cannot, to answer that question on the ordinance, that here's our city attorney that says we cannot make him move it because the ordinance was put into place after?
Yeah, I mean, we could do that.
I think that'd probably be solved at least half of it, showing that he can't do it. And then Glenn, I don't, you know, I don't know what the history is of that, and if he did hit it, or it's just a snow issue, or what. How do you determine that? Is that... Can you do that just by visual sighting when... Usually, like, no different than a mailbox or anything else. If a payloader's going to hit it, it's going to like rip it. Like, it's not going to break one piece or a couple of pieces.
It would tear it out of the ground.
Yeah, right, it'd tear it out of the ground. And you know, the only thing that I've known, and again, before I was in charge or in a management position, is that's been kind of a conflict there for years. And back in the day that I was plowing that alley, that wasn't done with a payloader, it was done with a pickup. But the damage has been for years, so that's why I just... And I mean, the guys are really good. If they hit something, they're going to come around the corner, they're going to say, "I hit a fence last night," or today. You know, then we're going to stand up and say, "Well, we hit it, we'll fix it." But, well, I tell you, payload catches a corner of a fence, and you're just not going to have much that luck. You're not going to break one T or another one 10 feet down.
Tear it out of the ground, probably. What about the power pole, or the power thing that he had there? Was that, was the fence there first, and then they put that in, or...
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Sorry.
So it looked like this damage was pretty old. So has this been something that's been kind of ongoing with the gentleman?
Well, even back in the day when Dennis was Public Works Director, because I know Dennis talked to me about it numerous times.
Okay, so this isn't something that recent?
Not that I'm aware of.
That we can tell?
Yeah.
The research that I did with staff and just taken... Is that as soon as the proposal was issued, he was put on notice that likely, because it's placed right on that property line, and there is no additional right of way to move snow, that likely there was going to be damage. And if that happens, that damage will not be reimbursed by the city. And I went back and dug in the files, and that's what I found with Glenn as to what was issued back in...
I think, seven, I want to say? I didn't bring a lot of weight. It's actually 14 years, you said. But he said it's only 14 years.
But he said it's only been 14.
When the permit for the fence was originally granted, it was approved and acknowledged on the condition that likely there could be future damage following the approval of that, even though he had the right to put it on the line, is that there was likely liability that he was going to encounter by placing that fence on that line. And so you kind of do that, you do that at your own risk.
Right, no, and I, I understand that. And it, it doesn't appear that he has any evidence that some vehicle backed into the fence. And so it's, it's a tough situation. It's a he said, he said.
And the challenge we have, as he mentioned, is that I believe he is the only individual remaining from the installation of the water meters, on the remote reed, water meters. That's the last one we have, and since we haven't been able to reach resolution on the fence, he won't allow anybody to access that. His water bill has already been increased by the utility board that, you know, that as much as he wants to combine the issues, they are somewhat separate issues. And so the course is, is that either that continues for a brief period of time here, or the next step is for the utility board to take an action to, to get that meter changed out, which likely would require legal assistance to do in that process. So the two are separate. He's wanting to combine them all together to try to deal with that. And so that's part of what we're wrestling with in our resolution of the issues.
Bruce and I had touched, reached out to him. We wanted to meet with him on the property because we were gonna propose instead of repairing, that city staff do the work or something, but move that fence back like four feet, because it is so tight in there. If you get a two-inch light fluffy snow, it's not a big deal, but you get some of these heavy 10-inch, 12-inch snowfalls, you can't go to the south because there's garages there, and you can't go to the north because there's fence right there. You just don't have a place to go. So I said to Bruce, well, why don't we try to work out a deal and move back? And he said, first off, you're not meeting on my property, and that fence is not being moved. You're fixing it or I'm suing you.
I believe we offered, or as I work with the staff, I think we offered two-thirds replacement cost to remove the fence, provided it moved back and he would need to participate, that we couldn't verify all of the issues, that it wasn't necessarily we as the city that did that, albeit it could have occurred with snowfall that we can't safely for certain. So we were trying to find and have looked at trying to find ways to provide resolution on the fence issue. But it does us so good to continue to put it right back on the property line.
Right.
There's a minimum five-foot setback that we have today in the ordinance.
Yeah, it sounds like, you guys answered enough. I think we got, you got enough documentation and everything else that you've been trying to work with them and and, you know, videos and the courses to I think, not an attorney, but with the documentation that you guys have and the notification, and trying to work with him. I just want to make sure that we were doing everything we can. It sounds like you guys did, so thank you.
And we definitely try to develop reasonable solutions. And that we haven't ignored them. We haven't, not attempted to engage in discussion to find a solution. We just have not been successful today.
That was all I had. I have nothing.
I have nothing else.
I have nothing, so I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second. Second by Dave Brusich. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. I don't mind any opposition. Okay, we're out of here. Thank you, everyone.